I forgot.
Okay. Hey, let me just quickly, what is this one, Joe? I have that, I have that. Let me just quickly remind people, these mics are live and hot. This is being recorded as well as livestreamed. So just keep in mind, even whispers in the back, these mics will pick up ambient conversations. So just keep that in mind, please. Alright, gotcha. Yep, yep. Oh, yeah, yeah, got it. Alright, if I can get everybody to stand for the pledge, please. Face the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, take your seats, keep in mind, these mics are hot. Alright. I am going to make a motion to open up the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees and call it to order for February 28th, 2022. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Alright, I said to the village clerk right after I got sworn in in April, that I said, "Does it ever slow down?" And she goes, "No." And tonight is gonna be no exception. Last month, we had a forty-seven minute business meeting, which I believe was a record in the village, and that was followed two weeks ago by a four-hour work session. So I think we're gonna be somewhere comfortably in between the two tonight. I promise it won't be four, but we ain't gonna be done in forty-seven minutes. Alright, um, let's see, first thing we're gonna do tonight, we've got a lot on the calendar, is I'm gonna open up for public comment. But before I start, I've asked the Cornwall High School head football coach, Ryan Baldock, and the defensive coordinator, Rich Ward, to come and speak tonight at the top and advise the board what they're looking to do. And the board will have some conversation on it, and then these guys can leave. But, coaches, you just step right up to the microphone there, just kinda give the board a pitch. They're read into this, but I'm sure it's better hearing from guys like you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, Ryan Baldock, if we haven't met, Rich Ward. We're just looking for a place where we can recognize seven outstanding young men who are, all have earned the opportunity to play college football in the fall, collectively as a group, with their immediate family, their mom, dad, you know, brother, sister, and just basically celebrate their success.
Excellent. So we're looking at doing this, as I have the date, this is March thirteenth, a Sunday, and Coach Ward, I think you told me you would change to 1:30 PM?
1:30 to accommodate our photographer, Lynn Fern.
Got it. And do we know what kinda numbers we're looking at? Total, I mean ballpark?
Well, basically, each, uh, we left it open to the families, but, um, if you're gonna look, it's, it's the student athlete plus give or take four.
Got it.
You're gonna get thirty to forty people.
We can, we can, we can comfortably host that, alright. I have mentioned this to the board, we haven't had a precedent for this, but I think it's a wonderful opportunity to do something here in the village to honor them. So, any board member have anything to weigh in on that?
I'm a supporter, but a hundred percent.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a public, public room for a good public purpose.
We really appreciate it, thank you very much.
That's impressive, seven going to play college football, huh?
What colleges are we looking at?
Monmouth, Villanova, Cortland, Springfield, Western Connecticut.
Three Cortland players.
Three Cortland.
Really?
Wow.
Cortland has money for football players? SUNY Cortland has money for football players?
I can speak for my son, he's paying full price.
But yeah, it is, it is a very special group, that's a very rare thing to have seven college football players.
Excellent. I'll be your point of contact on that, Coach. Coach, um, the board is in concurrence on it, so we will see you on March thirteenth at 1:30 PM here in the boardroom.
I would just like to extend the invite to anybody in the board who wants to stop by and get a photo shot. I know I invited Mr. Cornwright and Mr. Galliano. I think it's, I think it's good because these kids are a product of their, of their upbringing and their, their environment. And, uh, you know, Mr. Cornwright started these kids in youth football, so I think it's important that he's here.
Excellent. I did speak to the town supervisor, Mr. Wojcowski, today, he plans on being here as well.
Okay, great.
Outstanding.
Thank you very much.
Coach, how painful was that? Is that like a position meeting? That was pretty painless, right?
Ryan's meetings are a lot worse.
Thanks, guys. Alright, be safe. Okay, um, anybody else like to speak during public comment? I'll give you three minutes, or whatever it takes. If you don't speak at the top, there will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Anybody? Alright, moving on. Alright, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the January twenty-fourth, 2022 business meeting minutes as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, I'm gonna make another motion to accept the February fourteenth, 2022 special meeting minutes as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, outstanding. Treasurers report, the Open Utility Bouncers report for the end of January reads as follows. Village water sewer garbage and penalties, eighty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and sixteen cents. Town water and penalties, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five thousand and sixteen cents. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the February two thousand and twenty-two warrant number two, an authorized payment including prepayments totaling three hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, revenue expenditure reports by fund are general fund revenue, four million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-two cents, expenditures of four million, three fifty-nine, eight twenty-nine, and fifty-five cents. Water fund revenue, two million, six hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents, expenditures, two million, sixty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. And the sewer fund revenue, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty cents, with an expenditure of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, five thirty-seven, and thirty-four cents. Total receipts, seven million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, I'm sorry, seven million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred dollars and ninety-one cents, which works out to be one hundred point zero three percent in anticipated revenues, and six million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, which works out to be eighty-nine point two five percent in anticipated expenditures through the end of January. The sewer capital fund balance is four hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-one cents, including interest through January first. Alright, moving on to board department reports. Building department, trustee Kane, Kane, right, trustee Carnright, could you please handle for me?
Village of Cornwall Hudson Building Report for January twenty-twenty-two. Building permits issued, twelve. Certificate of Compliance Occupancy issued, three. On-site inspections, eleven. Violation, zero. Stop-work order, zero. Municipal searches, five. Solar panels, zero. Fire inspection, zero. Manny Carmona, Code Enforcement Officer. Thank you, Manny.
Alright.
Just have one question for Manny. Manny, you don't, you don't stand up, yeah, don't worry about it. Were you, were you able to talk to DB Mart about moving that clothing drop from in front of their house onto, if you can, stop by there and, and ask them? Because that thing is sitting on their, on their property in front of their house when it should be on, it should be on the gas station property.
That is correct, I stopped by, it's from to the owner, he's in the process of doing it.
He's gonna do it, okay, great, perfect, thank you.
And they're gonna handle, Manny, they're gonna handle their trash receptacle, which is out on the side. Once the spring comes and the snow's gone, they're gonna move that back inside enclosure in the back, correct?
We, I agreed to allow him to go until the end of winter, because we get more snow. But for next winter, he gonna have to do some kind of arrangements, we don't have to go through this anymore.
Alright, perfect.
Thank you, sir. Alright, no more questions for the building inspector, code enforcement officer. Fire department, Mr. Kane.
Alright, January twenty-twenty-two, department report, structure fires. They responded to one for a little bit over twelve staff hours. Automatic alarms were five for about seven and a half hours. They responded to ten medical events for about twenty-one hours. Two responded to two motor vehicle accidents for almost fourteen hours. Two carbon monoxide alarms, thirteen and a half hours. Fast draining, one event. Total sixty-four hours, fire prevention detail, one, for an hour. Meeting, they had two meetings for a total of twenty-four hours. They had five drills for a hundred and six, total of a hundred and six hours. They had four work details for seventy-seven hours, and public relations detail. They had one event for twenty-two and a half hours, so the total events were thirty-four, and the total volunteer hours were almost three hundred and sixty-three hours. Excellent. Uh, you have anything to add, Mike, or Charlie, beyond that?
Just that we gained an EMT in January, Charles Quinn.
Great, and then, Charlie, didn't you indicate last time, or Mike, that you, that we now have a couple of new recruits?
We do, we got a new one in February. We expected two more, but that's probably not gonna happen till March.
Okay, but it's still gonna happen, we're getting two more. That's excellent, very good news.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Alright, police department, trustee Brain.
Uh, hello, the Cornwall and Hudson Police Department Monthly Report from January first, twenty-twenty-two through January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. There were three hundred and sixty-eight total calls for service. Among those were calls for fraud, one, petty larceny, three, no arrests. Under vehicle and traffic incidents, there was one personal injury accident, one property damage accident, six traffic summonses issued, three traffic warnings issued, three parking summonses issued, and they established ten traffic enforcement posts. As far as noncriminal activity, there were seven fire response calls, two domestic incidents, four alarm response calls, one noise complaint, two suspicious person calls, one suspicious vehicle call, one suspicious activity call, four animal complaints. And as far as department assists, they assisted the Town of Cornwall PD on six calls, seven assists for EMS, two for other police agencies. They performed two welfare checks, four citizens' calls, and one assist to the COH Water Department. During the month of January, all COH PD officers received TASER training and recertification at the headquarters here, instructed by Police Officer DeWittco. During the month of January, Cornwall and Hudson Police received a seven hundred and twenty-eight dollar and forty-six cent grant from PERMA, the Public Employer, excuse me, Risk Management Association, Inc., to cover half cost reimbursement toward the purchase of two bulletproof vests and full cost reimbursement toward the purchase of two outer carrier vests for our officers. The chief also met with Troop Seventy-four of the Daisies during the month of January, which he had recalled to our attention at the work session. In addition, um, the, the chief had requested acceptance of a formal letter of resignation from Cornwall and Hudson Police Officer Hal Desjardins, effective March first. Um, and to accept that, we'll, we'll make a motion, I'll move, I move that the board authorizes the village to receive a letter of resignation from Cornwall and Hudson Police Department, from Officer Hal Desjardins, effective March first, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I will be an abstention.
Right, very well. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, anything else, Bill?
Uh, nonetheless, the chief has anything else.
Chief?
Just, I've been in contact with the mayor, I've been in the process of canvassing Orange County resource eligible list. Starting interviews this week to replace the full-time position that we made once the retired last September.
Excellent. Excellent, alright, thank you. Any other questions for the chief? Alright, moving on, Department of Public Works, trustee Carnright.
Village of Cornwall Hudson Department of Public Works, January twenty-twenty-two. Trash collected for the month, one hundred and twelve point five oh tons. Recycling collected for the month, thirty-seven point two five tons. Yard waste collected for the month, zero. Routine maintenance performed on village vehicles, cleared a drain line issue at Village Hall on New Year's weekend. Pretreated roadways for snow and ice storms, plowed roads and sidewalks. Coal patching of potholes continues. Sewer main backup between Grand Avenue and Wood Avenue. Members of the DPW assisted with the distribution of COVID-19 home tests. Note, we purchased a pickup truck for our two thousand and sixteen Dodge Ram. Thirty-five was damaged during an ice storm at the cost of twenty-two hundred dollars. We will swap it out in the spring. We had a demo of a new sewer jet machine also. Dave Halverson, Superintendent of Public Works.
Excellent, Dave, anything to add? Any trustees with questions? Alright, moving forward, Water Department, trustee Gaylord.
Alright, Water Department, Village of Cornwall and Hudson, January twenty-twenty-two. Monthly production, twenty-four million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand gallons. Daily average is eight hundred and six thousand gallons. Samples, we collected seventy-nine samples in accordance with our approved water quality monitoring, monitoring plan. We collected four samples in response to a boil water advisory due to a water leak repair on Tomorrow Lane. Treatment, routine water treatment operations for the month. Replaced filter skid, one modules at Black Rock. Repaired pressure regulator at Black Rock. Transmission and distribution, sixty-four utility markouts were completed. Water main leak repaired at Curtis Court in Tomorrow Lane. Residential frozen lines, frozen water lines, eighteen Beeks Road, Five Division Street. New water service inspections, Twenty-two Avenue A, two Twenty-two, Twenty-four Noel Crest Court. Performed routine leak detection. Meters, red commercial water meters, red town residential meters, red village residential meters. Eleven final water meetings, eleven final water meter readings were completed. Seven residential water meters were replaced. Two miscellaneous customer appointments completed, completed water meter inspection training. Uh, property maintenance, uh, snow removal respectfully submitted, Michael P. Trainer, Water Superintendent.
Excellent, Michael, anything?
No report, nothing else.
Alright, any trustees with any following questions? Okay, alright, so moving on to resolutions. Alright, the first two resolutions, approving the specifications, contract documents for the composting toilet restroom facility for down at Donahue Memorial Park, and setting the bid date for the composting toilet restroom facility are gonna be contained in one resolution. I'll read that, and then I'll take a board vote on each individually. Alright, whereas the village board is determined to install composting toilets at Donahue Memorial Park, henceforth referred to as the project, and whereas the village board of trustees is the only agency with authority to undertake, fund, and approve the project, and whereas the village has received a grant from the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, DASNY, in the sum of fifty thousand dollars toward completion of the project, and whereas the village prepared bid documents which were approved as to form in contact by the attorneys for the village, such that the village board can solicit bids for the completion of the project in conformity with the New York State General Minnesota law. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the village board hereby designates itself as lead agency for the project and preliminarily classifies the project, excuse me, as a type-two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEAKER, and be it further resolved that the village board hereby authorizes the village clerk treasurer to publish a notice seeking bids for the project and stating that a pre-bid meeting be held on March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two at ten AM, and that bids be submitted in accordance with the bid documents no later than April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at two PM. Therefore, I'm gonna make a motion approving the specifications, contract documents for a composting toilet restroom facility at Donahue Memorial Park. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Question, just question for Joe. Um, the resolution, we've seen that a pre-bid meeting to be held, and the document says it's not, non-mandatory pre-bid meeting. So does it, does it matter in the distinction?
We're having a pre-bid meeting for anyone interested in attending. I don't think it's mandatory for, for bidder to attend.
Okay, no, that's what I'm saying here, I just wanted to make sure it was just consistent, okay.
Alright.
The, the contract says non-mandatory, that's, I was just making the distinction.
Okay, any further discussion?
Non-man, sorry, non-mandatory, but it's a small project, but.
Right, I get it, when sometimes you have to.
Bid documents are somewhat large for larger projects too. So, in a larger project, computers may ask for a meeting.
Yes, understood, okay, all good.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, I'm gonna propose a motion, uh, setting the bid date uh, for the composting toilet restroom facility project at Donahue Memorial Park for April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at two PM. Any further discuss, I'm sorry, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Tax Day.
Yes. Okay. That's good, alright, next item of business, the election notice. The next annual election of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson will be held in the boardroom of the Village Hall, three twenty-five Hudson Street, Cornwall on Hudson, New York, on the fifteenth day of March, twenty-twenty-two, between the hours of noon and nine PM by voting machine. The candidate's office and terms are below, and I wanna say this because I got four calls today, and just so folks know, I am not on the ballot. The ballot is going to be for two trustee positions, and the candidate's offices and terms for which is follow, are which as follows. Richard Gaylord, thirty-seven Duncan Avenue, running for trustee for two-year term. James P. Kane, two ninety-seven Hudson Street, running for trustee, two-year term. Brendan G. Coin, thirteen Pollock Court, running for trustee, two-year term. Do I need to make a resolution on this, or just authorize you to?
Motion to authorize the publication.
Alright, so I'd like to propose a motion to authorize the village clerk to,
Publish.
To publish the election notice.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that's done there. Next item of business along the resolutions is gonna be to set the public hearing for municipal separate storm sewer systems, the MS four audit. Whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing to consider the adoption of the MS four audit. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village board hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of the project in accord with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEAKER, and Part Six Seventeen of the regulations implementing SEAKER, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project, and it is further resolved that the village board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SEAKER, and it is further resolved that a public hearing is held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the audit of the municipal separate storm sewer systems, MS four, and to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed project in accord with SEAKER on March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two at seven oh one PM at the Village Hall located at three two five Hudson Street, Cornwall and Hudson, New York. And it is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. Alright, um, I'm gonna propose a motion, um, authorizing and directing the village clerk to cause the public note, notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving on. Next item is the approval of the revised tax levy and warrant. This one, alright. Should I read that piece of it? What should I read on there? Oh, gotcha, alright. So I'm gonna reduce the filing resolution and move for its adoption. This is a resolution levying the total taxes and other charges extended and levied against each parcel of real estate property shown on the roll, prepared and verified by the assessor for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three fiscal year. Resolve that there be levied and assessed against the real property of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson the following sums for village government and other charges for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, with a tax rate of seven dollars and sixty-four cents per thousand of assessed valuation. The general fund, total taxes for the current budget, two million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and ninety-seven cents. For omitted taxes, one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. Delinquent water rents and charges, forty thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents. Delinquent sewer rents and charges, thirty-five thousand, five dollars and fifty-six cents. Delinquent sewer capital fees and charges, fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and eight cents. And delinquent garbage charges, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars and four cents. The total re-levy is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and two dollars and forty-two cents. Total real property taxes and other charges on roll, two million, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and three dollars and ten cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Gene, wasn't the, the omitted taxes that low?
Yes, those are taxes that were because people had lost exemptions.
Right.
And the other reduction is from the STAR exemptions.
Okay.
Not STAR, excuse me, SCAR.
That's what, the, the small, yeah, small case assessment, right.
Yes, and that's where the differences were, so you have to add the two together to come to the.
Gotcha, okay, understood.
Uh, I still have two months left in my rookie year, so I can ask basic questions about law and budgets. The, um, two questions, one is, on a practical basis, as I understood it, the re-levy falls to the county to actually collect. Is that accurate? It's still on our books, and so we're passing this, but the county.
If by October thirty-first, this village tax is not been paid, then it goes to the county for collection as a re-levy.
Well, no, I mean, there's a re-levy, um, is re-levy included in the?
Yeah, it's for unpaid water, sewer.
Oh, okay, but not taxes, okay, got it, okay, fine. Makes sense, alright, thank you. And then the, um, the exemptions, um, just to understand, I see Five Points Mission, I see St. Thomas Church, and I just wondered, knowing that, um, there's one other religious institution, is that not uniformly applied? Is there a, a whole set of reasons why the exemptions apply? I'm just unfamiliar.
There's certain religious organizations that have parcels which are partly taxable. Those are the pieces of the total property that you find within your exemptions. Otherwise, they would be in Section Eight, the Holy Exempt, holy, not H-O-L-Y, but W-H-O-L-Y.
Yeah, understood.
I was holy exempt.
Alright, very much understood, thank you very much.
Bill, anymore?
Nope, that's it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving along under resolutions. We have our next one, which is the approval of the twenty-twenty-two Fire Company Inspection Dinner, scheduled for May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two at Donahue Memorial Park. Alright, I am in receipt of a request from Storm King Engine Company Number Two Fire Chief, Michael Trainer, to hold the one hundred and fifty-fourth Annual Inspection Dinner at Donahue Memorial Park on Saturday, May twenty-eighth, from four PM to eight PM. The fire company plans on setup on Friday, May twenty-seventh. I'd like to make a motion to approve the event, subject to receipt of an insurance certificate listing the village as additionally insured, further to support Storm King Engine Number Two's application for, and receipt of a one-day permit to serve beer and wine. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions for Chief Trainer, or Chief, anything that you wanna add? Assistant Chief?
Um, just that we'd like Sunday as a rain date, just in case, too.
Sunday is a rain date, okay? Got it, alright, did I get a second?
Second, yeah.
Alright, any further discussion from the board?
It's kinda loud.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. It sounds like it, doesn't it? Alright, next item is, that goes there, the next thing is going to be, where did it go? Nope, that goes there. This goes here, I got it. Alright, next item. Sorry, I have a thousand pieces of paper here. Alright, it's gonna be the approval of the twenty-twenty-two movie music nights at Donahue Memorial Park and Donahue Farm. Alright, I am in possession of a memo from Dominic Cordisco and Mike Trainer, both co-chairs of the Cornwall and Hudson Special Events Committee. They are requesting that, uh, they are planning the upcoming movies and music on Hudson Series. It's an ongoing process. They'd like to once again provide movie nights and music at Donahue Memorial Park this coming spring, summer seasons, along with a special fall event at Donahue Farm. All movies at Donahue Park are held at the south end of the park, nearest the yacht club, and begin at dusk. Music will be at the north end of the gazebo, at the north end at the gazebo with a six PM start time, except for September, which will move up to five thirty PM. The schedule is as follows, May twenty-first, there'll be a movie. June eleventh, there'll be a movie. June eleventh, there'll be a movie. July second, a movie. July ninth, there'll be music. August thirteenth, there'll be music. September third, there'll be music. September tenth, there'll be a movie and a possible short film festival. And October tenth, there'll be a movie held at Donahue Farm property. Um, so, I am going to make a motion to approve the following dates that I just ran through. May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, further discussion?
Um, the, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but if there is that, uh, short film festival, that would also be at Donahue Farm as well, right?
Yeah, Dominic could ask that, if we do do that, they possibly have it at the farm, but that's still, still up in the air, whether we're not, whether or not we're gonna do that.
The way he expressed that to me was that if that were to happen, the films would be so short that if a train came through, uh, it would wipe out a, a film.
Yeah, and, and, and anything held at the farm, we still have to speak with the, the, the farm committee. We, we just want to get these dates lined up now, we'll go to them and get some input from them.
Yep, thank you.
All right, um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now I'm gonna make a motion to approve the following dates for the two thousand and twenty-two music on the Hudson, which were July ninth, August thirteenth, and September third. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, that's that. Next item is the food bank on the Hudson. All right, I'm in receipt of a request from the food bank of the Hudson Valley to hold a five K race on June eleventh. They've completed a special event permit application, which I'm in possession of, and they provided a certificate of insurance, which I am also in possession of. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve this request, subject to coordination with the village police department chief. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. All right, I think we've gotten through the easy things. Okay. We have moved up the police body worn cameras policy update, because I believe the board is in a position tonight to vote on this. Now, I just want to say this, and then I'll give the attorney for the village an opportunity to speak a- as well as other members of the board before I propose this resolution. The resolution is adopting a body worn camera policy for the Cornwall and Hudson Police Department. I'm exceedingly proud of this board. I am thankful of, uh, Police Chief Dixon, as well as Attorney for the Village, Joe McKay, uh, and this board for, for slogging through this to get this done. Um, we, i- it was done with relative ease, with the exception of a couple of sticking points, which we discussed at length in the work session last week. Um, and really, it, it involved when an officer would be allowed to review body camera footage from their body worn camera, and what the requirements were. So, Joe, you want to give a quick two-minute dump without discussing contract negotiations and, and just kind of where we settled, and, and, and what the, the language is that, uh, that the P B A, as well as the board, is going to contemplate tonight? Well, the P B A's approved it, the board is gonna contemplate tonight.
Sure, I, I will try to thread that needle.
That's why, that's why you're the attorney.
So, right, so, so of course, we won't get into the specific details of, of what, um, was negotiated, except to say that, that the issues concerning when police officers are permitted to view, uh, their own body camera videos in relation to when they issue reports and, and other types of administrative proceedings is an issue which the whole country's been dealing with over the last several years. Um, and, uh, we do have an adopted, uh, policy as of night, so, tonight, so, well, and I, let me take that back. P B A Council has approved it. I think the P B A has approved it, but there's a little asterisk there. I mean, it's approved in concept, we discussed it quite a bit. And, and I got confirmation from P B A Council today that they're willing to agree to the final policy. But, but the sticking point, yes, was, under what circumstances, officers would be permitted to view their video camera footage, whether it was before issuing a report or not, and in connection with potential administrative or disciplinary proceedings. And there is some, um, at least one decided opinion that I'm aware of, uh, which was issued by the Public Employment Relations Board, and that's a state administrative agency, um, which covered a lot of the things that we discussed, um, pretty closely, pretty closely. So, so it fairly said, the per interest arbitration decision, which does have some presidential effect, kind of cabined our, our final negotiations. And I think ultimately, uh, the board has, uh, chosen to follow per precedent. And, you know, as, as we've discussed, and I tried to point out in the, uh, resolution, we think that overall, this is in the best interest of the officers and the overall public interest of village residents to adopt this, this final policy.
And why is this important? Um, this is important because I think, as Joe pointed out, we are in an era where it is of paramount importance to our citizenry that we exhibit a hundred percent transparency. And if the technology is available at a relatively cheap cost to the village to outfit our officers with this, and study after study after study has shown that once outfitted with body worn cameras, there is a, a relatively marked diminution of the amount of civilian complaints that come in. So it will protect our civilians, and it will also protect our police officers. What's the most important, and I think it's something that is why I'm exceedingly proud of us pushing this initiative, and I think the town is gonna follow suit, I know that they are discussing it, and I've discussed this with my colleague Supervisor Wojcowski, and I'm glad the village has taken a lead on this. But really, I think, from the perspectives of allegations of police misconduct, allegations of police brutality, any types of use of force from, you know, subduing someone physically all the way up to using a taser before you get to fatal use of force, any officer involved shooting, any police involved deaths. Um, the purpose of this is to provide us more evidence, and the purpose of this is also to either indict or exonerate by adding additional evidence to the investigation. So, what I'm gonna do real quick is, I'm gonna read the resolution, and then before I ask for a vote on it, I'm gonna ask each member to, to weigh in. So, the way the resolution reads right now, we have the equipment. We are trained on the equipment, and Chief and I will talk about when this would be rolled out if the board determines to, to pass this resolution tonight. And it reads as such, whereas the village board of trustees recently purchased body worn cameras for use by the members of the village of Cornwall and Hudson Police Department, and whereas the village board of trustees has negotiated the terms of the body worn camera policy with the Cornwall and Hudson Police Benevolent Association, or P B A, and whereas the village board of trustees believes that the adoption of a body worn camera policy for its police department is in the best interest of the members of the department, and is in the best interest of the public health, safety, and vil- and welfare village residents and visitors, now therefore be it hereby resolved that the village board of trustees hereby adopts a body worn camera policy for use by the village of Cornwall and Hudson Police Department, as approved by the village board and the P B A, and authorizes its implementation by the chief of police. So before I move on that, I will start with the deputy mayor and say, do you have any thoughts or any input to this before we vote on it?
Um, just a couple of things.
Motion and ask for discussion?
Yeah.
Should I do that, all right? I would like to make a mo- uh, make a motion adopting a body worn camera policy for the Cornwall and Hudson Police Department. May I have a second? Thank you, further discussion?
So, um, first, I think, I think the board did a very good job in discussing this, um, and considering, um, considering all, all, uh, aspects of this and opinions of this. I, I personally have done a significant amount of research on it, and I am comfortable, um, I'm comfortable with this resolution, I'm comfortable where the, where, from my perspective, where the board is at in regards to, uh, the P B A's, uh, proposal and, and accepting it. So, um, I think we've done our due diligence on this, without a doubt.
Trustee Cornwright?
Um, I agree with everything Jim says, um, uh, Bill's, Bill made a lot of comments, Jim made a lot of comments, and, um, they were all taken into consideration. We did a lot of research, we did, um, some research on other police departments, N Y P D and others, Jersey. And, uh, I think we got the best we can get. Um, and always in these types of things, you have to, you have to find a ground that's acceptable. And we think we have a ground that's acceptable and that the chief can administer.
Okay. Trustee Gaylord?
I really have nothing else to add, I think they covered everything.
All right, trustee Brain?
I think I'm, I'm likely the dissenting voice here, but, um, just have a little statement. The purpose of outfit, outfitting our officers with body worn cameras is for gathering evidence, promoting transparency, providing an objective record of enforcement activities. I voted in, I voted for their purchase and deployment, I think they will enhance safety and accuracy. Um, and I believe the policy as written will serve those purposes in virtually all instances. Uh, however, I believe that in the highest stakes interactions between police officers and the public, such as those that the mayor, uh, iterated, we've been, we've been using the shorthand critical incidents, so use of force, weapons discharge, injury or death. I believe the need for transparency rises in importance. Thankfully, to my knowledge, such incidents are rare to the point of non-existence for our force. Um, but if such an instance arises, a camera should be a supplement to an officer's judgment and perception, not a replacement, and the public's interest in understanding not just what happened, but why, is vital. Uh, that's why the board engaged in the discussions, to, uh, include language from the New York City Police Department's, um, policy regarding an officer's right to, uh, preview footage before making a statement following a critical incident. The N Y P D policy would allow an investigating authority the discretion, as I read it, I believe there's a disagreement about that discretion, but it reads to me as though it would allow them the discretion to decide whether or not to take a statement before allowing, uh, the officer to review video. And I come to this decision, we place rightly tremendous trust in our police officers, rightly, as I say, including the potential for use of deadly force, and the safeguards that accompany that trust are also critical. I feel that the policy as written is incomplete, but understanding the considerations that the attorney for the village and, and the others outlined in regard to our discussions, it is, um, I, I believe it's incomplete in that regard. Uh, I do believe I speak for all of us when I acknowledge the public's interest in deploying the camera system as soon as possible. I recognize the good faith decision-making of my fellow board members in arriving at their votes, and I do believe this policy will, will be adopted. That's my statement.
All right, before we, thank you, Bill. Um, before we, uh, before we vote on this, chief, anything to add, um, in regards to, what do you think the potential time, if the board votes to approve this tonight, when do you think we can get officers outfitted and roll them out beyond a, a training scenario? When do we, when can we tell the, to, tell the public that our, that our folks will always, going forward, be outfitted with body worn cameras?
Um, probably at least like two weeks, I'd like to just get everybody just re-accelerate again. We, um, obviously, there's been a couple of, uh, storms in the road that we just had to clear up. Um, so officers have been trained a couple of times, but I would just like to, uh, okay, more training just prior to, uh, dispensing the order and everything. So hopefully, if everything goes well, probably by the end of the middle of this month.
Okay, I mean, I, I think that's fair, absent dissent from any board member. I think two weeks is a fair amount of time. I am gonna recharge you with something. Every month, with your monthly report, I am gonna expect a highlight of the body worn camera program. So, that will be briefed to, to the public and obviously to the board, where you have an instance where body, body camera footage is being pulled and harvested, and, and the village is taking possession, the village police department's taking possession of that, because you had a citizen complaint, because an officer came in and said, hey, something happened and went sideways or squirrely, and chief, I just think it might be good to have this, this on hand. Um, I just want you to, e- each month, when we do this at the business meeting, just to brief the board in on where we stand on it. And then if there are things that we need to go back and fix as a, as a board, or, or, or look at in, in our work sessions, then we'll do it, and we'll go back and try to get it right.
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, any further discussion? All right, um, I guess I should do this on a roll call vote, so, um, I will start with, well, actually, I should have you do the roll call vote, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Mayor Galliano?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Kane?
Aye.
Trustee Cornwright?
Aye.
Trustee Gaylord?
Aye.
Trustee Brain?
Aye.
That's four, one.
Four, one, all right. So it passes as, as written, and I think in, uh, because I can say this about my colleague, Mr. Brain, we've had many discussions on this, I think his, his, uh, objections are in good faith. And Bill, I think as we go forward and we determine, and we see other departments, I, and we see how these things play out, this board may have to come back and, and readjust this. But, uh, I do appreciate the, the conversations with each of you and, and the research that the village attorney and the, and the police chief did. Um, so I'm proud that we're gonna be rolling these out. Okay, moving forward, um, draft policy guidelines on donations. And I'm gonna keep this here, um, as a placeholder, because this is just not going to be something we're gonna be able to, to handle in one fell swoop. But the board has been in, in, um, uh, conversation in regard to how best to accept donations from people so inclined, and I think we have a couple of sticking points. One is, uh, what's the word, it's not unaddressed, it's, uh, Bill, nonspecific, or what's the verbiage?
Uh, unrestricted.
Unrestricted, whether or not we allow people to make unrestricted donations, where they make a donation to the village for any purpose, as opposed to requiring them to make a donation, a specif- a specific donation that is unsolicited from the board or from the village, and direct it to a particular project, which I think is what, I'm sorry, go ahead.
For clarity on the, my, the, the, uh, unrestricted donation, specifically unrestricted cash donations was-
Unrestricted cash, if somebody wants to give us a thousand trees, we'll take them.
Yes, or, or a plot of land.
Or a plot of land, too.
But we are not soliciting that, we're just saying it.
So that is, before I let each board-
We're not soliciting that.
We're not soliciting, nor, nor, nor should we. Um, there's been some conversation, obviously, and we've been talking about this at every board meeting in regards to what is going on down at the waterfront. Do we, do, we don't want to turn people off from donating things, or wanting to memorialize a loved one, or do something for a cause, but we don't, and I hate to use the term littered, because that's not what it is, but we don't want the landscape to be obstructed by a number of, um, you know, construction projects. So the board is working on that, the board voted to put a moratorium on accepting benches. The board did not put a moratorium on accepting trees, but the board is gonna work with the Donahue Farm Property Steering and Planning Committee to see about places therein where trees, in the near term, before we get our tree plan put together, which is in its, not in its infancy, but is not where it needs to be. We're following guidelines from the comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive plan, I think, was specifically vague to allow us to, to adapt to changing times and to, and to, and to different concerns. So, we did have a resident that reached out, a former trustee, and made a great idea about, instead of accepting benches or things like that, what about replacing the guardrail down at Donahue Memorial Park, the ugly guardrail down there, and put a low profile, so we're talking about less than three feet tall, uh, freestanding stone wall, and allow people to make donations of memorial plaques along the stone wall? And we could do this in stages, so instead of doing the entire swath along the roadway down there, we could do this in, in, in sections. So I know I sent, uh, an email out to the trustees, it seemed to be, uh, embraced, and I'll just open it for discussion. Again, w- we're not there yet, we don't have a policy yet, but I know the trustees have been ruminating on this, and I'll open it up.
I think it's, I know, uh, um, Rick Joya, uh, came up with it, and I think it's a, I think it's an excellent idea. Um, you know, maybe a knee, a knee-high wall, um, I think it would look, I think it will look beautiful. The, the question is in regards to, um, and what, uh, it's the devil's in the details. What's it gonna look like, or is it going to be, you know, um, a structure where you're gonna have people's names that are stamped on it in memoriam, like a, like pavers that they have on, on the ground, or is it, uh, uh, you know, a plaque, or whatever, whatever it might be? I'm sure there's a million ways to, to do it, but I think Rick had it, had a very good idea, so, um, hopefully it comes to fruition, so.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
I, uh, just that we tend to focus a lot of attention on Donahue Memorial Park with different elements. So there's a pavilion possibility, there's the composting toilets, there's the, uh, guardrail slash wall, there's even the scout kiosk, uh, and there's all the event uses that we're evaluating and trying to figure out, uh, occupancy maximums and things like that. And I just feel like, if we could holistically approach all those things, whether that involves going to the extreme, not extreme, but going to the effort and expense of hiring a planning firm, or if it's something that we could handle sort of in-house with the Riverfront Committee, you know, just getting it sort of consolidated as, as a plan, then it would kind of work together, uh, better. We'd also need some other evalu- We'd also need some other evaluation on that stone wall, which I think is, would look lovely. We can all picture it.
Yep.
The guardrail, I took a look at it. It's got quite a few dings in it. And so if that guardrail is, if the wall is replacing the guardrail, it's going to have to be a pretty good wall. And those are expensive.
What's the matter, Dave?
I said, so will the stone wall.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it is a good idea, though.
It is a good idea. And, and I think we should certainly investigate it and try to, without necessarily trying to do another comp plan, without necessarily trying to do another Donahue Farm plan, like, let's, you know, what, what is it that we?
And I think giant, you know, comprehensive plans, I mean, in the name itself, it's, it's broad and it allows us to drill down to the details. And that's a good point in regard to having somebody put a plan together. And I don't know if anybody was on the board then, but I think it was under the tenure of Mayor Gross. But we do have that picture in the work session room of an engineering firm that had done, and Gene, you could probably say better what year that was, oh seven, oh eight, where they actually did an artist rendering of what the waterfront would look like if, you know, they did a different dock area and did a walkway along the edge and everything. Was that 14 years ago, 15 years ago?
It was in that timeframe, yes. McLaren Engineering.
I remember Simon Grover part of, part of that down in the waterfront. So I'd say like in oh eight, nine.
Oh eight, nine.
Yeah.
But it was definitely in that era.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other thoughts?
I just think that, you know, in, in, in doing this, it's important because, you know, people want to donate, especially in memoriam, you know, they want to donate and it, you know, you just got to be careful how to praise it, phrase it with them, you know, that, you know, whether we, we, we can't do it at this point or there's no room or there's maybe other, we discussed other places aside from the park that people could maybe donate a bench or whatnot throughout the village. So it's just important how we, you know, the verbiage. So we, you know, again, you don't want to put a bad taste in anyone's mouth when they want to try to do a good deed.
Hundred percent. All right, so this is going to be something ongoing. I just want the public to know that we are still working on this and we are going to come up with a plan hopefully soon, but we want to get it right. Okay, moving forward, temporary storage containers on private property, status update. I had to cut the building inspector code enforcement officer out a little early tonight, so he's not here to brief in on that. And I asked him to circle back to the attorney for the village. We've been hung up on a couple of other matters. We are, Joe, we're looking at it, but we're, we're not in a place yet where I think we can present it to the board and say, these are the changes that we want to make.
No, I, I think the way we left it is that maybe Manny, myself and you, Mr. Mayor, or one of the trustees would kind of sit down, go through it.
Yep.
I know it's, people should expect that that's going to be on the list for a little while. So it's not that we're not working on it, but that's kind of a, you know, broad issue. It's going to be there for a little while.
Yep, agreed. Okay, moving on, COVAC, New Windsor EMS, BLS, ALS service update on, regarding the town and village discussions. I had a long conversation with the supervisor today in, in the town. Our next steps are this. We have exactly two weeks from tomorrow to present to New Windsor what our plan going forward is. The options with this are to allow New Windsor to take over both basic life support and advanced life support for us here. And there is a proposal being worked up right now and what that would look like and how we would do that. Number two would be for us to continue to subsidize, require some major changes at the top of COVAC and continue them on and get them up to the numbers where we need them to be in response, which is in the 95% to 98% realm, as opposed to the 82% to 83% realm. We are having a difficult time getting the call response logs from the county 911 setter. They've got some glitches and it's been difficult in looking across a three-year period. I had a year period, but that's not enough of a sample set. So the supervisor is engaged in that right now with the 911 setter to try to get that. And we are also looking at bids for other places like ambulance or mobile life to see what services are available and what our options are. If not this coming week, absolutely the next week, there will be a joint town, village board meeting. The town will host this one. We hosted the first one several months ago. And we will come to a decision there amongst the two boards on where we go. The supervisor, myself, will make the presentation. We will give course A, course B, course C. The two boards will discuss it. And then gentlemen, we will have to make a decision one way or the other going forward. So that is the status right now of where we are on COVAC and New Windsor EMS. Okay, next item is the Woodbury Creek Monitoring Program. So this is something that several years ago, when the town of Curragie, I'm sorry, the village of Curragie purchased, Mike, is it called a well field or is it just the well? I mean, I've heard it called both things. What, is it just the well?
Just called the Route 32 wells.
That's what I thought. Okay, all right. So technically it's not a well field?
It's got, it's a field that's got a well in it.
All right, well played, well played. All right.
Mike's going to law school at night.
So, so in 2019, the town and the town of Cornwall, the village of Cornwall and Hudson, the town of Woodbury and the village of Woodbury all got together and agreed to pay for monitoring to be done by La Bella Associates of the Woodbury Creek. Now, the Woodbury Creek is an important creek because it's a trout stream and it's, it's a, a bustling trout scene, stream. There was concerns that when the village of Curragie used their, Mike, is it 612,000 gallons per day? I got that number right?
Yes.
612,000 gallons per day that they're allowed to draw down on that well, that it was having a deleterious impact on the stream. So in 2019 and 2020, La Bella and Associates had a hydrology department that monitored this. In 2021, we had paid for them to monitor it, but it was one of the wettest seasons we had on record in recent memory. So the equipment's in place. They did not charge us to monitor it, but they assured us with the amount of water we got, the trout were fine and monitoring would have just been us paying for something we didn't need. The concerns are, and these are legitimate concerns, that when KJ files their reports, their monitoring stations are very close to the well fields on either side. One is by the Storm King Art Center. The other is just upstream of that. La Bella puts theirs further down towards Paleya and further upstream towards Creamery Road. They're getting different readings. So they're not going on record yet and saying, yes, you need to stop this, but they're not accepting what KJ is saying in regards to the drawdown on the other people's wells and the Woodbury stream. This is concerning. So I met with the town supervisor in Cornwall, the village of Woodbury mayor, delightful gentleman. The Woodbury supervisor could not be there and our water superintendent all met. Mike, was that last week or the week before? The days run together now. Last week.
Last week.
And what we decided as elected officials, that we were going to continue this year, since it was going to be at a far reduced rate than what we normally pay, which Gene, was it 10, $20,000 that we each kicked in? I'm trying to remember what it, what it was last. I think it's 10, right?
There was a large chunk the first year.
Yeah.
Then it scaled down. All right. So we're looking in the village, we're looking at this scaled down amongst us four to a total amount of around 16 grand, which would cost each municipality $4,000 for another year of data. I'm not trying to write checks that I haven't, that I can't cash, but I think that that is absolutely something that we should do. So we don't need it yet, but this is something that we're looking to continue to do this year just to make sure that the anomaly that was last year, that if we have a normal summer or a hot and dry summer, we're concerned about the months of July and August. We might be in a position then of going back to the DEC and arguing for a moratorium on the well drawdown then. The problem is until KJ gets connected to the aqueduct, which Mike, two to three years out? Three years. All right. You think it's that far out now, for sure?
Yeah, they haven't even started construction yet.
They need that water. Once they get to the aqueduct, that water is only a backup source, which then would protect the stream and the wells of residents out in that area. So we are diligently working on this. We are going to make certain it gets monitored this year and I'll report back to the board once we get some data on that. All right, any questions from any board member in regards to that? Nope, all right, I mean, move that on. That is that. Donahue Memorial Park Commercial Permit Fee Schedule and Parking Discussion Update, reference the kayak companies. Where is that? Here we go. And the rowing associations. Okay. I had an excellent meeting. I want to thank the deputy mayor for sitting in on this because I believe in June of 2020, when we passed a village resolution granting the permits for the use of Cornwall Landing, Donahue Memorial Riverfront Park to conduct kayak excursions, tours and rowing tours, I was on the board then. And we voted on basically a two-page explainer on how this was supposed to operate. Well, Bill Garrison from Mountain Valley Guides, Colin Coyne from Storm King Adventure Tours, Megan Sheddin from the Orange County Rowing Association and Father Mark Connell from San Miguel Academy, who's also has a crew of rowers from Newburgh, all met with us, Jimmy, on Friday, Thursday? Thursday afternoon. I wanted everybody in the room, so I wasn't doing this individually with people and, and having the same discussions. It was a very fruitful conversation. And what I'd like to propose to the board tonight, and you tell me if, if we have consensus, if we should pass a resolution tonight or put this on the agenda for next month, which I think will be fine. Right, but there's going to be, got it. So tonight, I had a collective meeting with those four and the deputy mayor. And then I had individual discussions privately, which each of the individuals that I just mentioned. So I think we're in a good place right now where the board, I'm going to propose to the board that we raise the commercial use permit from $1,500 per year to $1,600 per year. That means that you can operate as a commercial entity down at the waterfront. It's a hundred dollars. I'm not suggesting, that's, that's, it's a hundred dollars. That's money. I'm not suggesting it's a pittance, but I think that is a fair increase after a moratorium on increases across the last couple of years due to pandemic. One of the questions I had for the kayak companies was the fact that we have been selling them commercial parking permits at a rate of seven max at $50 per, which is essentially what a non-resident would pay for a parking pass down there, that they can then rotate amongst their clients. Well, the board, and Colin Coyne actually reminded me of this and Jim Kane confirmed it. The board had actually agreed during the pandemic to authorize them to get 14 permits. Now, down at the waterfront, we have 78 normal parking spaces, eight trailer parking spaces, three handicap parking spaces. And my concern was if the kayak companies are operating at the same time, and I'll get to that in a second, that there's the parking space on the south side of our, of our boat dock, the slip we have right there at, at the waterfront, there's only 31 parking spaces. So if we're giving 14 and 14, not giving, we're allowing for purchase, 28, that takes up the entire parking lot. Now, the pushback from the kayak companies is, yes, but other than anecdotal evidence, what is the argument for that the waterfront has become overrun? That we're not seeing that. Now, they do attempt to stagger their, their departures on their tours or their excursions because I've asked them, because I've been down there and seen like two circles and they are going to do a better job of trying to stagger those so they can get boats in the water before the next group comes down. They are going to be cognizant of our residents because we do have residents and we do have visitors that complain if there aren't trailer spots available when the kayak companies have three apiece. So that's six and there's only a total of eight down there for everybody. I think we can work this out. I arrived at a number, which I talked to both Mr. Garrison and Mr. Coyne about and ran this by the deputy mayor who thought it was fair. Getting to yes, instead of 14 this year, we would, we would concede to 12. So each one of them would take a bite back of, of two of their parking permits. Now, look, there's workarounds to everything. They both assured me that's not what they do as far as buying resident passes and using those. They will stick to that 12, so two six maxes. We'll only allow them to buy six max. We'll give them two of those for 12 total. Other than that, as I looked through everything on here and I want the, I've sent this fee schedule out to the board. I've asked you to take a look at it. You know, in, in the commercial parking permits, we're charging the kayak companies for these parking stickers. We're charging the same rate as non-residents. Village residents pay $5, town residents pay 15, non-residents pay 50. So we're charging them non-resident rates. But when it comes to the trailer permits, we allow them three at $75 per and non-residents are paying $200 per and village residents are paying $70 per. So we're giving them a break on one side, giving them close to a residential rate. On the other end, we're, we're charging them the non-resident rate. So what am I saying? We're going to bump up the commercial use permit fee from $1,500 to $1,600. We're going to keep the parking permit sticker fees for them at $50 per. They're going to agree to cut back from 14. We're going to offer them, I wanted 10, they wanted 14. We met in the middle at 12. We'll keep the commercial trailer permits at 75. We will ask the two companies to make certain that no, at no time will there be six trailers down there, which essentially takes up two-thirds of the available trailer spaces. They promised to work with us on that. And then in regards to the rowing association, they gave me a list of dates and times that they want to launch. It was nice having them all in the room at the same time because they had not met. And they're all down there at different times during the day and it was nice to have them in a room together. They now know each other. They know who's in charge of each of these operations and I think they'll help look out for each other. Jim, did you see that meeting any different way or what was your takeaway?
No, I, everyone was cooperative. They did get to meet each other. They knew what we, what we were trying to do. And I think they were all in agreement coming out of it. I know, we knew what the number that they wanted, but I think we met in the middle. It's, it's, to me, it's somewhat of a haircut. It's only, it's only two, two spots per entity. But I think it, I think it went well. And, and I know that the, both the, both businesses are abiding by, abiding by the terms. We identified a couple of things that they have to update on, which they both agreed to. And I believe that the San Miguel and Oker are, are also working well with them. It doesn't seem to be any issues between the entities themselves. So I think that the meeting went as planned.
Now, I did go over item by item what the requirements were for this granting of permits. And there were a number of them that they were in agreement, had not been completely followed. We cleaned that up, meaning float plans. So chief, they both, Colin and Bill both promised me that they were going to make sure that that gets, that that gets done this year. As far as the rest of the stuff, really, chief, and I'll, I'll meet with you on this privately, items five, five through 12 were the sticking points, you know? Making sure the trailers are all parked in the designated trailer parking area and not left along the beachhead. And, and I don't think any of them do that. They, unless they're doing an offload or something, I don't think they leave them there. Number two, that the applicants have a float plan approved by the Storm King Fire Department, that the applicants use a drop box in Donahue Park to place float plan in every time an excursion or tour occurs, that the applicants all have excursion, tours, trips provided with a marine radio for communications with emergency services, which they assured me they do, that the applicant train all staff on common landmarks for notifying rescue agencies the location in case of emergency, which of course they comply with. Applicants have a person, have personnel trained in first aid and CPR. They both assured me they do. Applicants maintain accountability of group participants. They've been doing this a long time and they're good at it and, and they do that. And that they're required to meet with the representatives of Storm King Fire Company and the village to review item six through 11 mentioned here and above. And they all assured me that after they spoke to you, chief, or you, assistant chief, they would get back to me and tell me that was a deal. I also told them, because they wanted to buy their permits right away, that they could not do this until the board passes the new fee schedule. And they agreed. I said we would do that at the reorganization meeting, the first week of April.
It's usually scheduled the first Monday.
First Monday in April, and then I assured them I would have it all set aside for them. They could come in and get their stuff and be ready to rock and roll. So. Have we leaving anything out? Any other board member have any way in on what I just briefed on where we are with kayak and rowing permits? Okay, that was an easy one. Okay, moving forward, next item, vacancy, Bill, this is yours. Vacancy in the Donahue Farm Property Steering Planning Committee and how you believe the board should handle this?
Yes, unfortunately, we had a departure and unfortunately, times two, it was the chairperson. Erin Cousins is a planner with Orange County and she is currently, she's, her job has changed so that she is now one of the people who adjudicates community development block grants. And the, her manager said, you know, Cornwall applies for community development block grants and you're, you know, sitting on a committee that is going to potentially be looking for funding from the county and it sort of seemed like there might be a little bit of a conflict there. And so rather than put that into conflict, she, she decided to step down. So, uh, she'll be missed, she is a very intelligent person with, uh, and was, and this was the first role that I'm aware of that she had taken on in the community, kind of, um, doing this kind of work, um, but, you know, she's smart and she'll be around. But, that said, we now have a, a vacancy, we do have a vice chair that the committee, when they self-organized, they appointed Kristi Larkin as the vice chair, so we do have leadership. I imagine that Kristi would, uh, take on the chairperson role if she wants it, if not, at least there is interim leadership. And the thought was just that we had, um, I think about twenty-five applicants when we first appointed the nine-member committee, uh, so we can go back to that pool of applicants and see, uh, where we stand and, and, um, you know, see, see who's available and if anybody still wants it, and if we can come to agreement on a person, uh, offer that to them, um, and then the, uh, committee of course would organize to appoint a chair, and that would be their, their vote. So that's where we kind of landed at this point, rather than put out a new call, it was recently enough that those people who stepped up at the time should still be out there as, as, uh, potential candidates, so.
Alright.
So that's what I think we're planning to do.
Excellent, and you'll keep the board apprised on how that process goes?
Sorry, yeah, I'll pull all those applicants, I, I meant to do it today, but, um, didn't have a chance.
No worries.
So I'll pull those and send them around to everybody, and, uh, we can regroup on that.
Excellent. Alright, next item is the potential purchase of an inflatable screen for movie night on the Hudson. Now, we had discussed this as a board at the work session, and I know the work session was long and laborious, so you might have already been blanking out when we discussed this, but I had, I was approached by the two, uh, co-chairs of the Special Events Committee, Chief Trainer and Dominic Cordisco, they had asked me about potentially the village being willing to spend ten thousand dollars to buy a screen, um, that was a rugged, ruggedized, I guess is the right term, hardy, um, inflatable screen that would cut the timing down. Now, I asked Dominic to do me up a workup, Dominic is a attorney of, of great repute, and, um, and he of course gave me two pages full of great information, um, one of the things was, because the board voted five oh that night to approve that, was that the actual cost, and I'm hoping Jean is sitting down when I say this, is fourteen thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents, which includes delivery, and there's no sales tax, Jean, just so, just so you know this. This is a thirty-foot wide professional-grade airscreen inflatable screen, and Dominic provided me a list of bullet points, I love this, you know, it's just perfect. Here's some key facts for the board to consider. The inflatable screen assembles in thirty minutes. You can see it being assembled in a video, which I have, which he sent to me, which I looked at, and it is impressive. For comparison, now I just said thirty minutes, for comparison, our current movie setup starts at eleven AM and it's not fully broken down and stored away until about fourteen hours later. Mike and I, meaning Mike and Dominic, and the other volunteers finish up around one AM, this is the primary issue. We want to continue to put on these community events, but we've been doing four to five movies a year, and the amount of hours it takes to host each movie is a limiting factor. Also, number two, the current screen is two, six years old, it has some tears in it, and is not, is likely to last another season. Our current screen also has a wood frame that is six years old and shows sign of use. The wood frame and screen require the rental of a trust for each showing, the trust rentals a hundred dollars per movie, and Mike, the pickup is in Newburgh, correct? Pickup and return is in Newburgh?
Yes.
Okay? The new thirty-foot screen is made of professional-grade materials and is modular, meaning that if one part breaks, it can be replaced. Number five, there's a three-year warranty on this. Number six, this is the only professional-grade inflatable screen of this size and quality available, it's made in Germany. Uh, when Dominic inquired of Jim Taglauer, the distributor's rep, about the life expectancy and reliability, this is what he had to say, quote, "I have to say I'm proud to sell these screens mostly because of their lifespan, we've had clients who've had their airscreens for twenty-plus years, they're designed to work outdoors and take a bit of rough and tumble, but the better you take care of them, the longer they'll last." Number eight, the thirty-foot screen is about six feet larger on the diagonal than our current screen, it'll be impressive when we've, on view, and somewhat larger than our current screen, the projector is a high-definition projector, the one that we own, and it can handle the thirty-foot screen. Now keep in mind, our projection equipment, Mike, ten thousand dollars?
Yes, ten thousand dollars.
That's what it's valued at. Okay. Screen is rated to withstand winds of twenty-four miles per hour, while we would not show a movie in times of high winds, we do occasionally get some wind down at the river. I picked this professional-grade model of the others because of its wind rating. Um, buh buh buh, the screen is in stock, and once a purchase order is approved, will be shipped and delivered in about three days. Um, gentlemen, I would say that we all voted to approve ten thousand dollars, what is the board's feeling after I just gave you that, uh, update in regards to this being fourteen thousand four hundred and something dollars?
Can it be turned into a bouncy house once the movie is done?
Of course. Can it be rented for the town for further use?
Well, the whole purpose is, is that we would use, this is not ju, because the village is buying this, so it would be something that would be dedicated to movie nights, but it could be used, and, and I'm not on the Fourth of July committee, I'm not pretending to know what they do, but it could be used for something there, it could be used for a, um, you know, an indie movie, uh, uh, film fest, it could be used for a whole host of things, it's not just restricted and exclusive to the movie community, correct?
Yeah, and, and one of the things most recently we got asked to do was they want to use our equipment for a, um, a viewing of the HGTV show up on Main Street, they're gonna do it in the municipal lot there. So I mean, there, there would be other uses, we've had calls from PTOs and PTAs and such.
What's this, uh, Mike? Um, I'll say, so, uh, obviously, does it get, uh, powered down, the deflate?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so what's the storage area when it's down?
I don't know offhand, Dominic did all the research on that, from what I saw on the-
I assume it's gonna take a container?
Yeah, from what I saw on the, the video, it looked to be about the size of this table.
Wow.
It's small, it, it really is, and, and we did-
What's the material, Mike, do you know?
I do not know. Um, we did look into the-
I don't think so.
I was just wondering.
We, we did look into an alternative, keeping the same type of, of screen that we have, a replacement screen is three thousand dollars for like what we currently have, and then to, to build a frame around that out of aluminum, seven thousand dollars for just the aluminum. So you're up to ten thousand dollars.
David said it's made of prog, professional-grade materials and is modular, and that's it, um, and this is probably important for, for purchase, it's made, it's made in Germany by a company doing businesses, Outdoor Movies, and it is a sole-source distributor of this su, this quality screen.
You sound like you work for these guys.
I, I saw the video, it looked impressive, it looked impressive!
Do I gotta set a good two knives if we buy this thing too?
You're dating yourself with a good two knives.
I think, I think aside from the actual physical screen and the actual cost of the screen, I think what we have to weigh in on, and it was touched on in the letter, is that you have Mike and you have Dominic and you have some other volunteers, um, you know, I mean, those are long days, and, you know, they want to hand this off in the future to maybe some young volunteer firefighters, this and that, you know, it's a big difference than selling a guy, you know, you-
Two hours versus fourteen.
Fourteen hours versus, yeah, exactly, well, here at thirty minutes, you know, whatever the case may be, so, um, Mike and Dominic are not gonna do this forever, and it's, like I said, it, it, aside from the actual cost of it, you know, let's take a look at-
And if it goes down that small?
Yeah, you know, what, what's it gonna cost us over the course of the next five six years?
I got one more question, do you know how much it weighs?
I do not, do, like I said, Dominic did all the research on it.
Does it say how much it weighs?
Uh, that I do not know, but-
Is it a haloed or something that you're asking about?
No, but what's Dominic's story?
Alright, hey, hey guys, um, we don't, we, we don't have to do this tonight, but I'd like to do this within two weeks, because we want them to have it, and they want them to have time to practice with it, but Rich's point is really the point here, I mean, Dominic and, and Mike have been doing this out of the goodness of their heart for six years, even though they were off one year, so that's why they're giving me this year, because of the pandemic, they didn't have it, so, they've been doing it for a long time, and we really are trying to hand this off to a committee of people that can commit to doing two hours or three hours on a movie night, instead of dedicating an entire day and night. So, um, is anybody opposed to, again, I, I got board concurrence at ten thousand, is anybody proposed that not to exceed fifteen thousand? Okay, I will work that up, and I will, I will, Jean is taking a deep breath, and Jean will, Jean is gonna stare daggers through me tomorrow. I won't mess with her, I won't talk to her tomorrow morning till she's had her coffee and had time to calm down.
And just, along those notes, Mr. Mayor, I'll also look for some other funding that may be available to reimburse the village through a grant or something.
Well, and, and this was something that I thought was also important, when Mike and Dominic asked to see me on a Saturday, and I wondered why, and they needed some time on this. Um, also, they do a lot of fundraising, first of all, these movies cost money, you've got to pay the rental, you've got to pay the rental fees and the rights, the licensing rights and all that, so, and they've done fundraising in the past to cover that, the village gives them, I believe, five hundred dollars a year toward the effort, five hundred, Mike, how much does it cost to do the movies each year?
It costs on average seven hundred dollars per movie, that's just for licensing fees and whatnot, that doesn't-
Thirty-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, so, i, and that doesn't include the, the fundraising, we've done the purchase, the sound equipment, the, the projector and such like that already.
Okay. Alright, alright, moving forward before Jean gets too much, too angry or, alright, next item, um, update on the Donahue lease agreement, I'm gonna leave this at this, that the attorney for the village and the current resident, I mean, the resident of the, of the property are, you wanna-
We exchanged calls this afternoon?
You did, good.
Yeah, we did, so-
Excellent.
So we've gotten that far, we didn't have a substantive discussion yet.
Gotcha.
Couple of back and forths.
So to update, to, to update everybody, um, the village has extended a lease, um, to Ms. Donahue, and Ms. Donahue, we've asked her to have an attorney obviously take a look at it before she signs it, she had a couple of questions and things that she raised, which our attorney for the village is, you know, taken under advisement, and then we'll, then we'll, if there's anything that needs to be changed substantively, we'll bring it back to the board and we'll get it hammered out, but she's negotiating in good faith, and the village wants to get this right again, so, we're not going after her retroactively, we want to get this right, get it signed and, and, and get it done. Alright, I think that's it on other business, so I'll move on to, for your information, voter registration day, Saturday, March fifth, which is a week from this Saturday.
It's this-
Oh, it is this Saturday, that's right, tomorrow's the first, geez. Alright, March fifth, this Saturday, from twelve PM to five PM, in village hall, in this room. Alright, election day, Tuesday, March fifteenth, from twelve o'clock to nine PM, uh, twelve PM to nine PM, um, I don't want to complicate matters, but the board will be taking up the issue of extending our hours in March, we will be discussing it for next year, but I don't want to confuse anybody, the hours this year are the same as they've been for eons, twelve PM to nine PM. The Vietnam Veterans Memorial Service at Donahue Memorial Park is scheduled for Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, from eleven PM to twelve PM? I'm sorry, eleven AM to twelve PM, and this, excuse me, the St. Jude's Tricathon will be held here in the village hall parking lot outside these doors here on Saturday, April second, between ten-thirty AM and eleven-thirty AM. Um, I know it's not on the agenda, and I apologize, but I just got a copy from Eddie Hurley, who is our bandstand, uh, concert arranger and all-around good guy, and I have a copy of this, and I will tomorrow try to get a copy of this up on the village website and on our Facebook page. Our first concert this year is gonna be two weeks early, at the bandstand, starting on Tuesday, May seventeenth, our last one will be scheduled for the last Tuesday in September, which is Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, so we have, we have a ton of bands, um, booked for this series, so looking forward to that. Alright, without further ado, I think the next item is going to be board comments, and I will, let's mix it up, I will start with Trustee Brain.
Uh, what month is it? February. Um, lovers, last day. I got nothing. I, uh, I think we covered a lot, I think maybe I'm still worn out from the four-hour plus, uh, work session that we had-
You had time to sleep that off.
Um, and, uh, thank you all for the engagement on the body-worn camera policy, that was, uh, very substantive and important discussion, and I appreciate it. Um, and beyond that, am I forgetting anything that anybody in the room would think I might have in a special interest in? No, thank you, that is all.
Alright, uh, Trustee Gaylord, comments?
Uh, I just looked up, it appears that the, uh, screen weighs three hundred and sixty-five pounds.
Oh, what? Heavy.
Three sixty-five?
Whoa!
Yeah, I think that's nothing.
That's nothing!
I know, but how do you move it?
It's the size of a table.
A dolly!
Court!
You can have a dolly or a cart, yeah. I think that, that's not, you're waiting for a thirty-foot screen?
And it floats.
So wait a minute.
Once it's inflated.
Yep.
So you deflate it-
I thought it was much more than that.
You deflate it, and then obviously, you must fold it a lot.
Well, I mean, how much is all the, you have a wooden frame and the screen, how much is all that?
Trust.
Phil, I'll, or, or Dave, I'll send you the link, I'll have him.
Yeah, there's a video link, Dave.
Let me ask one question, like-
I had another question, oh, I had another question, oh, are, are you, as your committee, allowed to solicit funds?
We are and we do.
He doesn't want to come in the room.
It's called plausible deniability. Alright, wait a minute, so Rich is still, Rich has still got the floor.
So that's a good thing to know.
What, what can we sell our old screen for? If any.
We'd have to look, you know, maybe a thousand.
All right, so it works.
Yeah, now, well, and the other thing was that Dominic wanted to keep it as a backup in case-
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Mike, the question becomes the, uh, how to inflate it, is it like a small generator?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Is that part of the fourteen?
Is that part of it? Yes, yeah, so that's-
But Jean is gonna have a heart attack tonight.
Your truck isn't.
Comes with George Clooney, I don't know.
What else, Rich?
That's it.
Alright, uh, Dave, are you done, you got anything else?
Nope.
Alright, uh, Deputy Mayor Kane?
Nothing.
Um, I would like to just say one thing and reiterate what Trustee Brain said, um, I always come away from our discussions feeling smarter for listening to other people and listening to opposing views, and I think, um, we did due diligence on that, and, um, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the trustees for what you do every day, because I bother you every single day with stuff, and you're so patient, and I appreciate all your help on things, so. With that, I am going to open it up now for public comments. Mr. Coyne, would you like to speak?
Good evening, folks.
Just speak your name and, uh, and your, I know, I know, it's, it's real-
Brendan Coyne thirteen, Paula Court, just, uh, three comments, um, just wanted to, uh, go along with what Bill said about Erin Cousins, um, we had a tough time finding someone who was willing to share, and, um, she, she stepped up, so, uh, I just want to thank her for doing that, and, uh, in her resignation, she says, "I'll be around," as you sort of alluded to. Um, secondly, I'm happy that, um, to be running for, to be re-elected to the board, and lastly, uh, may peace prevail in the Ukraine.
Amen.
Amen to that.
Yep. Alright, any, we're not seeing anybody else that needs to speak, um, any alibis, counselor or department heads, any alibis?